What was that?
Oh! (laughing)
And put the toe of the voted.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right.
So... My first thing on the agenda is the rearrangement of the seating arrangements for the voters.
You might notice we already did it.
For the new chair, I make motion that we vote Tom Millius as the new chair for the years 2017-18.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, you have no friends.
(laughing) That's okay.
Everybody loves you.
Yeah. And I further move that Kim Royd become the vice chair for the ward 2017.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
I... I make a motion that Troy be named Clerk.
Second.
Is that what we call you now?
The new guy.
The Clerk. All in favor?
Aye. Last year was a big funny joke about me being the Clerk.
And I'd like to take this opportunity by May, I'm still in a position to thank all those people who came out to vote, not only at the town meeting, but also on election day, and thank you for having enough faith in me to put me in for another three years. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Halifax Selectment's Meeting from May 23rd, 2017. As is our usual custom, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(speaking in unison) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We're being taped by Area 58.
What?
We're being taped by Area 58.
Oh, yes. We're being taped by Area 58 this evening, which is available on local access television and YouTube. Approval of the agenda. Is everybody looking at the agenda?
I have nothing to add.
As long as we have the executive session to deal with the highway cemetery negotiations, also we need to go in to executive session to discuss...
At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, to discuss the litigation, the case of Halifax versus Berksdahl. And we will not be coming back into regular session after that. So can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is the Selectmen's minutes. I guess we got a lot of them here, regulars.
We've got sessions from June 1st, 2016, regular session September 27th, 2016, March 28th, 2017, and regular session April 11th and 25th for 2017. And it's regular session from May 8th, 2017, and you weren't present at that meeting. Tom? The May 8th meeting, so, executive session February 28th, 2017, March 16th, 2017, March 28th, 2017, April 4th, which I was not present, April 11th, 2017, April 25th, 2017.
I'll make a motion that we accept all the minutes as printing.
So I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 96 for $340,472.5. School warrant number 97 for $518,669.93. Withholding warrant 98 for $127,517.1. Vind the ward number 99 for $39,261.35. Vind the warrant number 100 for $62,808.76. Payroll warrant number 101 for $362,181.7. And vind the warrant number 102 for $7,673.53. Withholding warrant number 103 for $133,526.70. Ambulance commitment 4C for $46,446. Ambulance commitment number 5A for $37,739. Ambulance commitment number 5B for $7,482. And mobile park fee number 5 for $5,160. And payable to the licensing corporation $30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's pretty true.
Look to vind the warrant number 104 for $235,657.11.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And we have approval to approve the Selectment bills for 2017. Schedule of Department paid bills payable $2, and that's correction of warrant dated 3/28/17.
Second. Oh, you said that one, okay.
We have insurance for MIA property and casualty incorporated $332. Selectment's expense account $23.75. Selectment's expense account $70.72, and that's for WB Mason, WB Mason, and for political trade. So, law account $1,252.23, and that's Dushweers and Brooks, Durentis and Holland, DC. Law account Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo, professional service general statement May 1st, $1,237.50. Law account Michael C. Gilman, Exquire, professional services and labor, $440. Law account, we get an awful lot of litigation, aren't we?
Well, it's simply that we had to file on previous bills that we had to wait for town meeting to approve the necessary appropriation.
Matthew Binder Incorporated, $124,43, law account. General fund, pick accessible cable number 6945780, $45,813.14. Monposet Pond Management, express newspaper advertisement $28.75. Recruitment and employment training, $280. That's bid Plymouth Occupational Health, and I guess there's two handles for that sandwich clothes. And this is the most reading I've done for a while. And the last, and not least, recruitment and employment training, express advertisements for the express newspaper, $120, and that completes my presentation.
I will second those, but I need to abstain from the MIA vote because I sit on the board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that completes my presentation.
General mayor? We can go through a few things. I did want, just to make sure that we don't forget at the end of the meeting, we do have the Memorial Day celebration and observance coming up this coming Monday. The folks who are in the parade are going to be gathering over in Country Club Drive starting at 9 o'clock. The parade itself launches from there at about 9:30. Our ceremony should start at 10 o'clock here. Immediately following the ceremonies, also we'll have the dedication of the Margaret Fitzgerald Garden, just outside here on the town hall green, and obviously everybody's invited to participate.
And Clement, whether or not it will go off?
Yes.
Rain aside.
If it's heavy rain, we would cancel the parade and still have the ceremonies here, but...
Which is what we did last year.
Right. But at this point, the forecast was overcast, but no rain expected.
Awesome. I will not be able to be here, I'm away for the weekend, so I apologize.
Yeah, it's going to be kind of an interesting time, because I have a commitment as well, so I think Selectmen Garant's going to fill in for all of us.
I know, I've never missed when I feel terrible.
Military promise I will represent ourselves as well as across the camp.
Thank you.
Okay, just I wanted to put the board a notice, we're going to have a contract to sign next meeting. This is for the Water Department assessment of Richmond Park Plant and Wykamp Wells, there's no action needed tonight, it's being reviewed by council, and should be here for the board's assignment on the 13th, initial cost is $15,000. Pam McSherry has asked that the board request the supervisor of public records at the state level to allow the town to dispose of the animal control records in the Selectmen's possession from '94 to '99. Materials that were submitted as part of town reports from various departments been included in the report, so they're already in the official record from 2005 to 2010. Request to use town hall from 2010 to 2013, this is for the town hall...
For storage purposes.
Right, so we can get rid of these materials that are sitting in storage.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the...
Disposal.
Disposal of the animal control records from 1994 to '99, and materials to be submitted as part of town reports from 2005 to 2010, and request to use town hall from 2010 to 2013.
Tom, would you sign this?
Second.
We do have one cemetery deed to sign, I'll start passing that down.
All in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
School repair projects, so the board's aware, we do have a meeting tomorrow of the Repairers Project Committee, just like I've been invited, I posted it as if, whether there's a forum or not, just provides an update for everyone who's an interested party, and also if they have questions about the process and logistics, when is the work going to start, how's it going to affect school activities, things like that. There's going to be a site visit for the bidders next week on May 30th, day after Memorial Day. The sub bids need to be in on June 7th, and the general contractor bids are going to be in June 14th. The hope is that the project will get underway the following week, schools on, right now June 20th, because of various snow days, and then we should be, begin the work almost immediately after that. Just for the board knows, there's no action for the board, but Gordon Andrews Younger has filed an enforcement request to the building inspector about building permits that the building inspector actually issued for various buildings at Amanda Estates off Elm Street. Mr. Andrews believes that the issuance of the permits is in violation of town zoning bylaws regarding lots and frontage and such. There's no action for me to take either. The building inspector's reviewing this, and will issue a decision within 14 days, and Mr. Andrews can then appeal the issuance of the building permits, and a decision by the building inspector about his appeal back to the ZBA, so we'll see how that goes.
And isn't it, Charlie, that the ZBA that approved the project in order for the building permits to be issued?
They were one of the approvals, the board also had to make approvals, but we're involved. Use the town hall green, if the congressional church would like to use the back lawn in the town hall for the annual church picnic on Sunday, June 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there are no conflicts.
So moved. Second.
I think we've reached 7:45, approximately.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
We're a little off, people.
No, I'm wanting to second that.
Okay. All right.
I just can't move it, I can say...
No, he said "all those in favor."
Oh, so Russ, I think you're right on the floor.
And I said it earlier.
It's all right, I'm going to give you guys a pass, one meeting.
Yeah, it's the first meeting. Remember last time, last year I was, like, taken on?
Yep. When weren't you? Yes, Russ, we're just not like any other place, I'm sorry to tell you.
(inaudible) you're a lot better than most places. Believe me, you're a lot better than most places, I've seen a lot of different characters.
Hi! Yeah! We're so excited you're here.
No, thank you very much. Russ Kleikamp and Craig Curtin, engineer, PhD, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the grant-funded stormwater project that we've been doing for the Eastern Westmore Ponds. So we're going to go tonight just some of the past grants, product background, the approach, how we put this together, talk about some of the designs, the expected results, and then also some of the next steps, where we go from here. So just a brief background, I thought this was important to talk about tonight, I wanted to look at all the grants in the past and see what the numbers were, and see what we've gotten accomplished today. So going back to 2013 was the first sustainable water management initiative grant that we got, was roughly a $70,000 grant, and it had no match to it. That produced a report about the land use, the operations. 2015, we got another swimming grant that hooked up the use of automated controls on the Stump Brook Dam, which I believe had a 20% match, and that was funded out of pocket by the town of Halifax, that had to, those funds had to be appropriated and applied towards this. We did get recognized as a priority project program through the Division of Ecologic Restoration, which resulted in another study that Horace and Whitney did, and I know it seems like there's a lot of studies, there's a lot of reports on the shelf, what did we really get out of this?
Yeah.
I'm going to get to that in a second. We have EPA W most project, which was something that they funded, and that brings us to the last two grants, which was the New Epc, the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission, grant for the stormwater mapping, which is a $70,000 effort, had a $19,000 match, but because we are a priority project program, they contributed $5,000 towards that match, which was a good, which was a good thing. And then to our most recent grant that we've submitted, the town was originally awarded $105,000 on top of, I believe it was a $75,000 appropriations to do an alum treatment once in one pond, so we used something the town's going to spend their money on anyways to stretch their dollar more. Now, the good news for Halifax is that some of the other applicants in the 219 were not able to fulfill their funds, so he has these additional funds available. What it turned out to be, looking at the last version of the contract, was $331,000 of grant funds. Now, of course, that needs a 40% match, but we were able to use these past projects, these past grants that we did as a match. And then will also be, the town will be applying for a CPR grant, which is roughly a $30,000 effort, which has a 25% match or $7,500, but again, because we're the priority project, DER is giving $5,000 towards that, town's providing any kind of services, so it's roughly $1,000 or so. And that will take the preliminary designs of this project, move them to permanent final designs, which will be able to be put in the ground. So total everything up, the grant funding is roughly $550,000, $560,000. The town, for funds specifically towards match, has only had to invest about $28,000. So why is this important? As we're going through negotiations in the future with our neighbors, who say, "We have no money, we can't do it, what are we supposed to do? We're only at $50,000 a year." Well, we only had $28,000, and it turned into $560,000. So the point of this is to say that with a little dedication and hard work, there are ways to get the ball rolling, to get a funding, so don't take "we have no money" for an answer when there's ways around it. For this specific project, a lot of this, you know, I always look at the grant project as how can we fulfill a secondary accomplishment with this? So one of the things that we're doing on the stormwater mapping is that pretty soon the town's going to have to do what they call an MS4 permit, which I'm going to talk about in a second. Part of that permit, the town has to do a number of steps related to their stormwater infrastructure. They have to map it, identify it, prioritize all the outfalls, figure out if there's any illicit connections, if there's any illegal connections, you have to do public education, all sorts of things. For some communities, it's been rather intimidating, but it's a step-by-step process. So really, knowing that this was coming for the last couple of years, and seeing the opportunity for this grant, numerous steps that we did in this grant are going to satisfy your needs for this MS4, so you're really getting a multiple bang for the buck. About halfway through this assignment, DEP released the draft TMBL, which identified that 50% of the phosphorus coming from stormwater will have to be removed. So we tailored our designs in this for phosphorus removal to help you achieve that 50%. If these designs are implemented, as we showed them in the preliminary conceptual design phase, you will achieve that. And furthermore, we gave you options to enhance design, so if you had, say, 30 outfalls that dump water into the ponds, if you get 90% phosphorus removal from the first one, you no longer need 50% from the rest, you need 48%.
It's the total.
Based on, it's a total cumulative of everything coming in. So we looked at the outfalls that have the best potential for more elaborate systems, you know, to have multiple sources of treatment, have infiltration, surface treatment, settling, all these different things, so where you have the room, where you can do it, you do the most elaborate system that will relieve the burden on the more cumbersome outfalls that are, you have a pipe in private property that just you can't do anything with it, these kind of nuisance outfalls that every, every system has. So again, the goals of the project, we get to map the whole system, highway department knows what they're working with, because we can produce these 11x17 key maps, they can keep it in their trunk, they have a van, and in the catch base, or they have something going on, they can quickly flip to the page where they're at, it's very useful. And then some highway departments are even going towards iPads, where they have everything on GAS, they can touch it a hand, it's pretty neat what some of the departments are doing.
Just one question, is there a time limit on when we have to reach the 50% or 40%?
It'll be stated in the final, TMBL, it'll probably be several years, they don't expect you to do it overnight. And even this MS4 permit, the first step was doing September, or July, the submission of the NOLI, early September. And the first step of this permit is really, the town submitting to DEP, is what is your approach over the next five years to satisfy? It's, and as long as you're willing to work with DEP, they're not going to come down and, you know, drop the hammer on you, they're going to, because they only have one or two people reviewing this for every town in the state, so you can imagine the paperwork they're going to get when this deadline in September comes. Here it is, MS4, I'm not going to go over everything, but these first two items, these are the seven major categories of the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Basically, DEP wants each town to be accountable for the stormwater infrastructure, to make sure things like pollution and all these negative side effects are not happening. So with this grant here, we satisfied two of the major, the top two, which is public education and outreach, there is a fairly heavy component of the permit where you have to provide this, so through the board of Selectmen meeting, Monposet Watershed Association meetings, and other meetings, public information sessions that we have, we can help accomplish that. And another big one is the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, and Craig's going to talk about that in a little bit. It's basically making sure you don't have illegal connections, it requires you to map the whole town, and if you look at any of your outfalls during dry weather period, if there's something coming out, that's a red flag. I'll leave the rest for Craig. So with that, Craig?
All right. So first, we're just going to jump over to this map that we have on the side, so you guys all received a little insert, this kind of shows this insert in the bottom left corner. So this mapping, like I said, we were able to use GIS databases to actually create this map, and if you can kind of look on your sheet, you can see that there are several blue polygons. These polygons represent the drainage areas where the drainage systems would collect the runoff. So we were able to actually use the topographic maps to first find all the high points, once you find the high points, you can kind of connect the high points, and you're creating a watershed basin per se. So technically, if any rainfall were to fall within that polygon, it would make its way into the drainage system, and eventually into the outfall itself.
What happens, I assume the blue areas are the areas being drained?
Correct.
Okay. What about the areas that aren't in blue? So for instance, you have a sort of keyhole in the Lincoln Street area down there on the left, right in the middle.
Yes.
So where does that, if water falls within the keyhole, where does that water go?
So we looked at just where the drainage areas, where the drainage systems were, where the outfalls were. So those blue areas are particular to that specific outfall.
Okay.
So in this area, there was no hard pipes, outfalls that we found.
Oh, okay.
So while there's still likely surface runoff, that's considered a different type, it's a non-point source, whereas an outfall is a point source.
It has directly, has direct access to the water.
Direct access, and that's what the permit's going to make sure that you address, there's a lot of other sources of non-point, where you have, you have beaches, wooded shorelands, where of course water's going to hit the shoreline, but it's traveling over land, it's far less concentrated than point sources are.
Right.
So these blue areas are specific, within each blue area, you'll see a star, which is the outfall, and if the drop of water falls in this blue area, it's going to go out through OE10. That's the logic, and that's the logic behind calculating.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
All right, so now back to the presentation. So I spent about three days with the Halifax Highway Department.
Yes, you did, you had quite a field trip.
Yes, yeah, it was very enjoyable. So we actually opened over 230 catch basins. When we opened them, we took a picture of the inside, a picture of the outside, just kind of get a general description of what was there, what the condition of the catch basin was.
That doesn't look great, Craig.
Pretty sad.
Yeah, we picked a good picture for this one, but most of them weren't like that. But yeah, there were some that had trash, had a lot of sediment buildup, maybe were damaged more than others. But, so, once we took the pictures, we also conducted a catch basin form, so with this, we were just able to look at, again, the condition, just kind of mark the condition, the type, and then we were able to also look at the direction of the pipes coming into the catch basin, leading in the catch basin, and also the material and size of those pipes. So then in drainage systems that had drain manholes, we were also able to open the manholes, again, just to check the condition of the manhole itself, as well as confirming all the pipe material, pipe sizes as well, and just to make sure that we knew exactly where the drainage system was going.
So what you see on that map there, the symbols, the red circles are ammals, the squares are catch basins, and the stars are outfalls, and the lines in between, the arrows are directions the pipes show.
So in this case, for just this particular manhole, there looks like at least five intakes going in there. I mean, I'm ignorant, I mean, I would think there might be a pipe coming in, and then another one lower, at a lower level going out, but here's five of them, what's happening there?
You find all source, so sometimes, most drainage systems have a pair of catch basins where two pipes come into a central artery drainage system, so these pipes on the side might be dumping in here, where this is your main line going down the street. But yes, when you do see things like, typically a drain line, a municipal drain line's not going to be less than eight inches, so when you see a six-inch PVC sticking in...
Where'd that come from?
Good question.
Yeah, so, sorry, so yeah, so this location's actually on Heron Road, that's like the new development, and this, so this actually connects, you have a couple of catch basins into this manhole, and then there's actually one constructed wetland, like across the street that it goes to, and then there's another one on the other side of the street that also connects to that. So that little, I think it was about a four-inch PVC pipe, that actually discharged to one of the outfalls.
Discharged to the...
Yep.
Okay.
So yeah, that was just, yeah, kind of an odd one, they all don't look like that, usually it's just a couple of pipes coming in, and one pipe going through the outfall. So once we looked at all the drainage systems, looking at the catch basins and the manholes, we then looked at all the outfalls. We had a total of 40 outfalls discharging to the west and east Monposet Ponds, so these are just a couple of examples. The one on the left, this kind of shows channelization that occurred, just allowing the stormwater to make its way from the discharge point to the actual pond. The second also shows channelization, however, this includes a lot of sediment, this is...
It's still...
Yeah, exactly. So this contains a lot of the phosphorus or the nitrogen that's entering into the ponds, just collecting on the road, and then discharging into the outfall. And then these last two are just a couple of examples of what we found in the project area. And the last one on the right, a resident was able to kind of make it their own and add a little playhouse on top.
I was just kidding.
So yeah, it was nice, nice to see. All right, so like Russ said, as part of the MS4 permit, we were able to satisfy some of the requirements as part of this project. One of those was to conduct a dry weather outfall inspection, so since we have a drainage system, it's ideally supposed to just capture the stormwater in any, the stormwater from rainfall events and any snow melting. So during dry weather periods, nasty DEP likes us to go out and check each individual outfall to make sure that there's no flow exiting. If there is flow, like Russ said, that's a red flag to the town, it could be an unauthorized connection somewhere upstream, and something that the town would have to investigate and eventually eliminate.
Yeah, that MS4 permit will make you incorporate any illicit connections. Believe it or not, some towns in the past I've worked with, allow residents that have flood basements to town. You see all sorts of stuff that happens that goes in, but under this new permit, that's not going to be allowed. Luckily, the only one we found that had flow during dry weather was a water main bleeder, which I don't think that's going to raise any, any red flags for DEP.
What's a water, what is that?
The end of a water line, the end of a water line, bleed it off to get the job.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just so it doesn't stack in on the dead end of a water line.
And yeah, the MS4 permit actually calls that out as an acceptable discharge to the system, so...
Oh, really?
So that one passes, yeah.
Yeah, you see a lot of towns for that.
Okay.
So once we were in the field and able to gather all the information, we went back to the office, and we were able to input all this into a GIS system. So again, like Russ said, we were able to make maps like this, make maps like these for the highway department, it's just something that the highway department could bring to the field, or look at in the office to say, "Oh, we need to maintain, you know, catch basin 220, you know, where is that?", and they can kind of see what it is on the map.
Is there any type of filter system that you use in any towns that you know of that might lessen the amount of ever since upon it?
Yes, there is. As far as like filter inserts and backdrops like that, there are, we're going to talk about that.
And that's important.
It is, yep, we did, this is the first part, it's going to identify what we're working with, and then we're going to go into a lot of the designs, just to jump ahead a little bit, but we wanted to pull out kind of a few separate tiers of improvement. So if we needed to do something immediately at a low cost, to get a little bit of bang for the buck, yes, those filters are very good. The downside is they do require maintenance, they do have to be inspected a couple times a year, and there's a certain media cartridge that goes in there that has to be replaced every so often. So if you have one of them, it's not that big of a deal, but if you have 200 of them, But if you have 200 of them, and I think we include, we put a, there's a final, there's a memorandum and a report we put together.
Right.
And it was a significant cost annually to do that, not that it can't be planned for, but we wanted to reserve the filters for the more challenging areas where we could not fit in the additional stormwater management systems.
Is that the same system that you talked about at one of the working meetings that we sat down with the highway department? Is that the filter system that you talked about?
Yeah, it's just dropping the rate into the catch basins.
And when you factored that in, when you talk about the cost of it, did you factor in additional hours that maybe the highway would need in staff in order to?
Yes, yeah, in our final hour.
All right, okay, we'll get there.
One last question, I'll let you get to it. You did this on Halifax County property, was anything done with adjacent town?
Yeah, there was an outfall actually on Ocean Avenue, yeah, right next to Enhanson. So there is an outfall located there. We will talk about that one a little later, but yeah, we have talked to Enhanson about their contributions as well. Okay, so then, so once we, or another part of the project was to find the top three priority outfalls. So these are the outfalls that we wanna make sure that we can implement and.
Do that again to Russ.
So these are actually the top three, the priority rank here, one, two, three. And believe it or not, the number one priority is.
The Enhanson outfall.
Okay.
So again, so this satisfies the MS4 permit to actually prioritize all the outfalls. So to find the top three, we first looked at the location of the outfall, does it discharge to the west pond? Does it discharge to the east pond? And speaking with the town, we decided that we were gonna prioritize strictly the west Mon Ponset pond. The discharge is going to the west Mon Ponset pond as the pond is a lot more impaired than the east pond. Second, we looked at the impervious surface area within the drainage areas. So this includes rooftops, driveways, and roads, and these kind of generate the most stormwater runoff. So those drainage areas with the highest amount of impervious surface were considered the top priority. We then looked at the ownership of land, so is it next to a town-owned parcel or all private entities? It's a lot easier, obviously, because we're working with the town right now, that it's easier to implement those systems on town-owned land. And then the last piece is the cost of implementation, just to see how it exactly fits into the grant scheme, the scheme of the grants, and if we'd be able to get grant funding, because.
Every, every different grant has a different amount of fund. So typically, the outfall is going anywhere from $20,000 to $150,000. So if we have three smaller outfalls, we can apply for all three hundred grand. If it's a larger outfall, has a more complicated design, we can look for a different type of grant. In some cases, you have systems in Provincetown that's millions of dollars. So we had to go a whole new strategy, and we're actually able to get both the million dollar grants to the Mass Works program.
Oh, wow.
So it all depends on what your approach is and where you go from there. We're definitely prepared to help you, help you walk through that.
So yeah, so after the prioritization matrix, we were able to find the top three. So the first one was the outfall that we just spoke about on Ocean Avenue, this is in Enhanson. It collects most of the drainage from the north part of the pond and ends up discharging behind the house and creates this channel which makes its way to the pond. So obviously, it's been doing that for many years. And then the second is at the Halifax Beach Association on Route 2 Avenue. So this is actually a pipe that's located under newest vegetation. On the picture on the right, you can kind of see where it comes out, just another large drainage area system. And the third priority outfall, this is on Ponset Street, and this is actually a culvert that's connected to a drainage system. That's the result, you can see a lot of the sediment is built up there at that discharge point. And this is also right next to a town-owned land, which allows for a lot of implementation options. So another part of the MS4 permit that we're satisfied with this is bringing a couple of designs to the preliminary design level. So that kind of means that it's ready to be brought to permitting agencies. So we look at including the topographic survey, the wetland delineation, inverts and elevation information. And this is just kind of stuff that the permitting agencies look at to better determine if this can be implemented or not. So for the first preliminary design, we have Enhanson. This is actually connecting the existing drainage system first to a settling tank, as you can see in the drawing, which corresponds to the picture on the bottom right. The settling tank allows the stormwater time to settle all the sediments to the bottom before the cleaner stormwater goes into the infiltration areas.
So basically, in that case, the settling tank is designed to capture all this, puts it into a nice concise area. You can vacuum it out once a year, rather than trying to have to get a machine or shovel or, you know, all sorts of headaches that are associated with the sediment through the outfalls.
So yeah, so then after going through the settling tank, it then flows into this infiltration area. As you can see, all the smaller rectangles, those show the actual infiltration units that are installed. As you can see on the picture on the right, those are each of the individual systems.
So the water goes, the idea is to get that water, get it into these infiltration systems and have it go percolate through the soil media before it gets discharged. And you're gonna have some larger storm events where this system's gonna get filled up and the water keeps going. But under that case, the highest concentration, the highest polluted water.
Is settled.
Is settled. And then the rest you have, so you never really abandon an outfall. It's not wise unless you absolutely have to to create a drainage system at a low point without an overflow. So we tend to use the existing outfalls as the overflow, but just capture the worst part of it.
Can you go back?
Sure.
Just in terms of geography, I guess two questions. One, it looks like the work would be done in Enhanson. I don't know, obviously, has there been communication?
Enhanson is on board, and we're actually setting up a meeting with their consultant to figure out what the approach is. They have one set aside for engineering.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they've been very.
Great, okay. How long have the cranberry bog?
Haven't talked to the cranberry owners too much.
Then the other thing is, I mean, where's the pond, is the pond to the bottom here?
That's right, yeah.
So if the water's going away from the pond, where does the water that's in those units then go to?
That water gets settled up and it goes, it filters down through the soil media and that goes to the groundwater table. So eventually, in one way or another, it may as well, at least this way, it's been filtered.
So basically, you all divert, what you're, we're doing in essence is diverting the outfall.
Correct.
From going in straight into the pond to going into the system and then do the percolation route.
To get overly, you know, there's different treatments. Typically, when you look at new nitrogen phosphorus, you wanna do some type of surface treatment, what they call where the, so there's plans and vegetation that absorb that and take it up. You do get some that's captured in the settling and the sediment in these takes, and you do get some removal through the infiltration through the soils. Typically, the soil infiltration is more beneficial for bacteria and pathogens, things like that.
Works like a septic system.
Excuse me?
Works a little like a septic system.
Exactly, yeah, it will reach it through, but you know, like you hear with septic system, that nitrogen eventually makes it into the groundwater table. So you get some removal, but given the challenge with the surface treatment is we need a large footprint to do that. And typically, you don't have that luxury. You're not gonna put a constructed wetland, you know, for this whole area in the road, it's just not an option. So you have to take, so with this design here, and we have it outlined in a memorandum, is that for the catch basins that dump into this? You can put those filter inserts to capture that phosphorus right out of that. And this might just be two of them here, on the last two that enter into the system, but then you have the rest of the system to treat out for bacteria and to get additional phosphorus. So you get over that 50%, which relieves the burden elsewhere on the more problematic outfalls.
So yes, this is the second preliminary designs for the Halifax Beach Association, very similar to the last one. Again, we're using the existing drainage system to dump into the settling tank and then make its way into the infiltration area. So this infiltration area is actually gonna be located underneath the beach per this design, but yeah, again, it'll be backfilled and it'll look like it's not even there.
Yeah, once we, we've done a few of these, I mean, more, we do online, public access to beaches where they have discharges going to saltwater, where they have the shellfish closures after the rain. And of course, everyone thinks they're gonna see this and there's gonna be some obstacles on the way, but in reality, it'll just be back to the way it was. It won't be disturbed during construction, and that's a little bit of the headache you have to put up with, but it's gonna be very minimal, other than the covers of the settling tank.
Right, I was gonna say, just like for the septic systems, you have a pipe.
You have cover, and it is wise to put cleanups, little six-inch, but they're flush with grade, they're not a dripping hazard, and they'll have the area restored back to what it was before.
And so then this is the last design, this is at that culvert location. We have two systems designed in order to disconnect from the culvert. So this one actually is, you know, very similar again, but this time we had a larger separation from groundwater tables. So we were able to design the leaching, yeah, the leaching pit. So, you know, again, we're still infiltrating, but this just allows for a deeper infiltration. So then, yeah, kind of like Russ said before, the two pictures on the right, you can almost imagine putting all that sediment into that settling tank and removing that from the ponds itself. And then, as an additional part for system number two on the bottom, we actually also have a constructed wetland. There's an example of that in the bottom right. And it's just kind of, so this is actually a surface treatment, which Russ was saying is a little better at removing those nutrients because you have that vegetation in there.
Is the idea is to take this, it looks like, at least where the picture is, the water that, if you have a large storm, that's where the overflow will go to, is into the treatment area.
Correct. And then you have an additional rip rattle as well that goes out, and I can show a little better example. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll do that in a second, Craig, you go.
All right, and then, so then the next part was to develop the conceptual design. So all the outfalls that were not the priority outfalls, we created these conceptual designs. So these are a lot more basic, we didn't include any inverts or any elevations. So we just kind of included the, you know, relative area for infiltration, where it could be located. We needed to include any drain manholes and just kind of the direction of pipes. This just kind of allows the town to see what is possible for the next few options.
Right, and why these are important is that now that you have conceptual designs for your other 30 or 40 outfalls, a lot of the grant agencies, they wanna see some type of advanced desire, some type of design effort in place. So right away, you've established a platform for the future that you can keep submitting grant applications with this process for final design and for construction. And for the three other towns that I've worked with, P-Town Orleans and Brewster, it's worked flawlessly, you're almost.
With proper maintenance, what's the life expectancy of the designs that you have here?
Proper maintenance, again, they can exceed 50 years. Good concrete structures nowadays, when you have them, we typically put 50 years on concrete structures. They can go much longer though if they're maintained properly. The pipes we use now are ADS, are high-density polyethylene plastic, which will last you longer than 50 years. The leaching and infiltration, as long as you maintain them annually and make sure that the porous stuff get clogged, this concrete structure, it'll last as long as the concrete stays in good standing.
We're talking like H20 type?
Sure, yep. And that's the things you do have to replace from time to time with the frames and grates, they just, with plumbing, they get chewed up a little bit.
Are there any training or classes necessary for the people that are maintaining these?
There's, I'm sure there is. There's a lot of guidance, we included all O1M in our memorandum for what you wanna do. It's pretty routine with the catch basins and leaching pits, as long as you can keep the majority of the solid. You don't want that sediment going very high over the pores. You wanna make sure with your catch basin, which is the first structure, or your settling tank, which has three baffles, as long as you keep the sediment out of that, but you never go into your leaching system. So these are designed, like with the deep sump catch basins, then the settling tank, it's designed, as much as we wanna say everything is maintained as it should, we know that sometimes it's not. So you get both the catch basin sumps, then you get your settling tank, which can very easily be opened up and vacuumed up. Because yes, once it does get into the leaching pits of the infiltrators and it follows the pores.
Yeah, so it's a three-tiered system.
For the ones for the settling tanks. And for the specific grant we're going after, the CZM grant, they require a settling tank. They wanna make sure it goes in just because of that reason.
Yeah, so then here we just have kind of overall project goals, just to summarize. So as Russ talked about, the TMDL requirements to remove at least 50% of the total phosphorus loading. This is strictly for the stormwater itself, and if we were to install all the preliminary, or, yeah, all the preliminary designs and conceptual designs, we're looking at about, reduction of about 86%.
Wow.
So that, you know, gives you a lot of.
For those areas.
For those areas, yeah.
Yes.
And so, and then the next is just the completion of the task as part of the future MS4 permit. Like we kind of talked about before, this includes the dry weather outfall inspections that we've conducted, the preliminary designs, and, you know, the public outfalls that we're doing right now as well. And then finally, the last project goal, the more tangible goal is to improve the water, the water quality and production of beach closes for the ponds. Obviously, that's the big goal, is just to improve the quality of the ponds. And then we have this quick little example on the right of a vegetated swale. Again, this is a surface treatment, so it's a little better at removing the nutrients, just kind of shows another option how.
And you can see how much room, you know, these would be, here's your public right away. Here, the town, this was kind of a Y-shaped intersection, we were able to take up some of the pavement and make a return, so we reduced it. But it's a great little system, but you can just see the width of it for what you need. Here's the last picture, for the one, for the one area on Route 50, we talked about a constructed wetland. It's gonna be a before and an after picture. This is another one in Orleans, we had a very tight groundwater table, so we could not fit any infiltration in. There's a catch basin right here, where there's a mechanic shop, boat shop, and a lot of stormwater came in here. This went to a 36-inch pipe which went out to Town Cove. So we had a higher ground here, a lower ground here, with a sloping terrain in between, and it really turned out pretty good for a constructed wetland in here. So you put a couple cascading pools of water, you get in, it's a great little ecosystem, you train. This was about two years after we put it in, and this is a controlled overflow. So if you get a big storm in these, there's another pool behind the cattails. If this overflows, this goes back into the system. By the time it's overflowed, it's already been filtered out. We designed this, we don't want standing water, we don't want mosquito bit in here. So this is another maintenance issue with these constructed wetlands, is you wanna make sure every, a year or two years, you scrape out that top film on the pool, so this, over a few days. It's only designed for about eight or 10 inches of standing water. This will, you don't want standing water all the time. So that, you know, there's always concern about mosquitoes too. So I think we'll have a real good area. I know it's on the two parcels now that appear to be town-owned, but it could be a very good showcase project for the town. Next steps, where are you gonna go from here? So we talked a little bit about the next grant, which is the Massachusetts Topless Coastal Zone Management Coastal Pollution Remediation. I wish they made these shorter, but they don't. So it's this, it's 75% grant with a 25% match, we already talked about a little bit. That will fund the final designs and permitting. We wanna initiate the MS4 application, which we've already been talking with the town a little bit, and we'll touch base again soon on that. We wanna eventually in the future bring the non-priority outfalls, all the conceptual designs, up to a final design level. Ongoing with the public education and outreach, then finally, monitoring to make sure all these efforts are actually resulting in a, in a successful project. Questions?
If we were to implement everything we're talking about, and the overall problem with the ponds, what's the impact? I mean, there are other factors.
In the grant overall.
In the grant overall.
You still have the object, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah.
The phosphorus contributed to sewer water is a fraction compared to what the internal level is. Another one of the large sources of phosphorus you have coming in are, we've talked about cranberry bogs, we know that, septic tanks coming in, but are your natural resources. You have a large wetland here that drains, and that's the big culvert. That culvert drains this wetland into the pond, you have other inputs here, and then what do you do to solve that? There are things you can do, you can put a small coffer dam in front of that, so you increase the retainerage time of that wetland. You gotta make sure you don't flood anybody out, and it takes a little bit of looking at, but I've seen that before too, where you can build up that culvert.
Gives it a chance for the sediment and everything to.
To settle out before it goes into the pond. The big question is the internal phosphorus that's in the pond there, and it's gonna, I don't wanna go into another topic or discussion.
Right, I just wanted to get a sense of.
Yeah, it's, the town has to do as part of their own MS4 permit, they can't ignore it, it's a town's responsibility. It'll definitely improve the situation, but it's, in my opinion, it's not gonna prove it to the point where beaches will not be closed.
I just didn't wanna leave the impression with everybody that this was gonna be the cure-all for the ponds, that's all.
Unfortunately, not, I wish it was.
We're talking, if you were talking in years, would you say this three to five years in order to get this done, probably?
For all the outfalls or for the?
All the outfalls, essentially.
It comes down to how aggressive, unfortunately, there's only so many grants and so much funding, so with each outfall anywhere from 50 to 100, I think all the outfalls with the maximum, I'm sure it was like $2.5 million, somewhere in that magnitude. So if the town wants to put an article on next year's town meeting for $2.5 million, we can have it done in a year.
Oh, we could put it that.
Yeah, it does, we just gotta get it done. So you have to attack this sequentially. I would think with some restricted areas, the grant funding and moving forward within, well, the MS4 permit's gonna make you do it within five years.
Right.
To address your.
So it's gonna, but we talked about the three major ones, the top priority, the three top, what are we looking at?
We should hopefully by the end, if we get the grant by the end of summer, early fall, have this done, and then if we apply, there's a 319 grant.
Well, I was gonna ask you about the 319 thing.
The next year, so it's still.
Oh, right, it's still within the window. But I know that at one of the Mon Ponset working group, we had this small discussion about priorities for, I know we're due to get that 319,000, and, you know, we sort of talked about doing an ALN treatment, or we even talked about maybe putting some money toward.
But we knew that the money that we, that we're getting from DEP.
Right.
The additional money expires this September.
Okay.
We knew that we were not gonna be able to get all the design work and construction work done before that date. The ALN treatment, we knew we could get done this summer.
Right.
So we threw it at that. We're taking the money that it doesn't expire for a couple of years, and at this point, the idea is throwing it at the pump station. This, I mean, this doesn't mean, let's put it this way, we just heard about stuff coming into the pond. The pump station's gonna be one of the tools for dealing with the stuff that's in the pond now. We can't, you can't isolate it to one or the other, we're gonna be, and that's what we've talked about, you know, for a couple of years. We have to reduce the amount of phosphorus and other nutrients and pollutants that are going in the pond. You do it through, this is one of the ways of doing it.
And then the ALN treatment is to follow up, to try to.
Well, we're hoping that this big super duper treatment that we do this summer will hold us over for a couple of years, so maybe the 319 grant for next year could go toward the storm.
Something we can even do with this is because there has been a lot of discussions. about the exact scope items, is if we can finish our ALN treatments, there's a remainder of money that may not be enough for the pump house, whatever we're going to do. Maybe we look to start buying some of these filters and put them up. Start to buy some of them. That way we can at least get something in the ground now. We can get, you know, 10 or 12 of them, get the guys at Highway used to how they work and get some replacement cartridges.
Okay.
It's a DEP-approved phosphorus removal treatment. So, and first things first, let's get the ALN treatment done right away. But I would think that's something we can probably use. As long as it's geared towards phosphorus removal, I think DEP will be willing to hopefully work with us on.
Well, maybe we can talk about that on Thursday, when we meet with them.
Is there another working meeting?
No, this is with DEP itself to deal with the administrative consent order.
Just sort of, you know, explain certain aspects of it. You know, we had some questions about certain things that were in it, so this is a way for DEP to explain.
And this is the one with Brockton's administrative consent order, not us.
Is that open to the public or?
No.
That's okay.
No, I would love to have you there. We have time to be there.
You're not public.
Yeah.
So you could probably come.
No.
Sorry. Do we don't allow to have an expert in that part?
I know, I would love it, but yeah.
I was going to say, as long as you're talking about me, right?
We always praise you whenever.
Thank you.
No, absolutely.
So if there's no other questions, we're going to take a minute and just disrupt everything and take this all apart.
Thank you so much for all of your work. Really, I'm so glad that the Highway.
Appreciate it.
And please teach the service.
Did we start just in the fall? I was trying to remember when you.
No, because I saw some of the dates on the cards.
We got hung up internally, we had some other fires.
No, I think this is, I thought it was.
Nice presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I am going to say though, that the reason why I know this board is a lot more important than other boards, because one of the first ones I ever gave, when I said, "You guys have this", I got straightened out right away. And then insane, no more you guys.
Well, you guys wouldn't mind, you people are really bothered.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That would have been that far, yeah.
See you all.
Yeah.
Y'all were doing okay.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. We're so appreciative of everything you've done.
It's our pleasure. It's good work.
Do I sign?
I'm going to change it to him, because he's the chairman. I'm sorry, I had to change it around.
Oh, no, I don't. I'm okay. Okay.
Do you care if I just take a picture of that board real quick?
No, you're welcome.
Perfect. Thank you.
We haven't scheduled another working meeting.
It seems like a few weeks.
Mm-hmm. No, that's fine.
Especially given the slum the town was in. It's productive, I think, so. The thing is that, I mean, the LUMR selfie treatment in this project, you know, everyone's going to spend time, expend time working on these things for having.
No, I have to be trying. No, I know it's a lot.
Well, no, it's more, we're, you know, sitting up there as if I'm going to get something done, it makes sense, or we're going to get something done if I'm working on this.
Well, in a lot of ways, all of that work leading up to it got us to this point. So it makes sense to sort of take a pause with that, to finish up what we've all.
We'll see what comes out in the.
Right, right. I think it's great.
Is that just with DEP or?
Um.
Safe drive home, but you know, my guys, we'll give you a ticket if you're speeding up.
No, we're not. It's a lot. Five miles under speed.
Good for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, Russ.
We're going to go immediately to our 15, which is Colonial Power. Come on down.
Sorry, we're running a few minutes late.
No problem. Don't have to use the screen.
Oh, no screen?
No, no screen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have some very.
On April 28th, the Department of Public Utilities approved your, gave an order of approval for your municipal aggregation plan.
Finally.
Yeah, correct. It's just slow and steady. At that time, that basically gives you a loaded gun to go up to the marketplace kind of at your leisure. You can decide how long. So there's now a bunch of decisions in front of you. It all sits with you, we're going to help you through that process.
You may want to, I know the board's a little bit aware, but you may want to just go back to 101 for our TV audience. Because they, while we certainly went to town meeting and discuss everything, just if you can reiterate.
Absolutely. So what we're talking about is approval for a municipal aggregation plan. I think the big thing we want to mention is a municipal opt-out aggregation plan. So if the town side decides to sign the contract.
Okay, well, really go 101. We're talking about electricity.
It's electricity.
We're talking about residents being able to participate in.
Absolutely. So what we're talking about here is, for the residents and small businesses of Halifax, the town has aggregated all their electrical load, has the ability to aggregate all of their electrical load. And the way it works is, everyone is included in the program unless they do something to opt out of the program. So this would only affect their supply portion of their bill. National Grid would still keep everything in place. If you happen to be a, someone that has automatic withdrawal, that automatic withdrawal will stay in place. A budget bill would stay in place. If you're a low-income customer, you still get that discount. All of those things stay in place with National Grid. It's a simple line item change on the supply side of the bill. Rather than it says basic service, it would say Halifax aggregation slash whoever the supplier was.
And those people who already have purchased it separately from National Grid can opt out if they want, or stay into whatever they have?
Correct. So 30 days before the program starts, there's an opt-out period. Before it ever started, they have 30 days. If they don't do anything, it automatically de-enrolment program. Your program allows anyone to leave at any time and return at any time without a fee or penalty. If someone was already on a private contract with Constellation or something like that, those customers would not be enrolled. Those customers could always join at any time.
Oh, so they would be automatically not enrolled?
They would not be enrolled.
Okay. My understanding was from before that everybody was going to get, unless they opted off.
Only the basic service customer.
Okay.
If somebody has already made a choice, they stay with that choice.
Got you.
That doesn't mean they can't choose to come in. It just means that they're not originally enrolled because they made a choice.
Yeah, got it.
And people that are on right now, the way it works, if they have chosen National Grid's Greena program, they're considered to have made a choice. So National Grid doesn't give us those names of those customers. It's all people on basic service. But again, it does allow them to join the program. So there was a local process, town meeting, or selecting past the plan. Plan went on to the DOR. Then finally, on April 28th of 2017, we got an approval, saying that now you can go up to the marketplace and kind of test what you're looking for. It's a very interesting time in the marketplace. I wanted to give you some of the pitfalls, I will say, of the upcoming. So for the first time ever, capacity is kind of rearing its ugly head. What is capacity? Capacity is when we turn on the lights, there is enough supply to meet demand. ISO England is indifferent about price. All they care is, when you flip on the light, the lights come on. That's their job, supply and demand. Well, they've been very generous with our supply dollars.
Yeah, sure.
To the tune of $3.3 billion over the next three years. So the first page that I'm showing you is just showing you kind of the utility bill breakdown. 75% of it is supply charges, is what we're talking about. With the new capacity charges in place. 25% is just the distribution charge. The breakdown in the next column is the supplier cost breakdown. RPS, ancillaries, line losses, transmission, capacity and generation. So prior, 70% was generation. That's what we are talking about, we could affect the bill out of the 75%. If you go to the next page.
So 70% of the 75%.
70% of the 75%, is what we used to be able to affect.
Okay.
But over the next, over the last couple of years, so the generation piece has gone, 70, 62, 48. And as you can see, the biggest mover in that is capacity.
It's capacity.
So what used to cost us 3/10 of a penny, .003, is for you, starting next June, is going to cost .012.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So on the next page is kind of the bad news. So the good news is, is you don't actually have the capacity. This is a non-bip passable search action. We all pay it, and we're going to pay it, the auction's already happened, and we're all committed to it.
And the explanation for that is intuitive capacity. ISO is essence, goes out and asks for bids to supply electricity, to make sure that there's enough electrons in essence in the system, so that you could have very low-cost generators of electricity, very high-cost generators of electricity. And what happens is that until they've reached that point where they have enough capacity, that's where the price is going to be. And what's happened is that between what people want and what plants are out there, we're running into the situation that the expensive generators are now ones that might not otherwise have been awarded contracts, but now are because the lower cost folks who are out there are dropping out some of the plants that would have, let's put it, this way, Plymouth as an example.
For refurbishing, the point they can't afford sometimes with the cost to maintain the equipment that they have.
That's one of the reasons, yeah.
And so during this natural gas capacity issue that we have in Massachusetts, we continue to remove our diversity of the grid. Coal, very dirty, people don't want it being burned. So right down the street, Brayton Point, 1,600 megawatts. They're retiring that plant, Plymouth, no, 600 megawatts.
Yeah, that's common.
So what ISO New England is saying, I need more capacity. So they have this thing called the Forward Capacity Auction. Well, when the Forward Capacity Auction happens, somebody has to build. So in the top graph, I'm going to, is the NEMA northeastern zone? So they have a plant up there, it's called Footford. It used to be a coal plant right in sale. It's now going to be an 800-megawatt combined cycle natural gas plant. Well, to get them to do that, they gave them a pretty good deal of $15 a kilowatt month. And as you can see, their increase from 2015 to 2000, and this kicks in this year in June, is about a 334% increase. Here's the bad news.
That wasn't bad.
That wasn't bad enough.
Because you're in the SEMA load zone.
Okay.
And this is, but next year, you have Brayton Point, and you also have Plymouth starting to come offline. So also in the SEMA load zone is a 1,000 or 1,200-megawatt plant that got approved down in Grand Isle. Combined cycle natural gas, very efficient, the whole bit. But they also got themselves a nice deal. And as you can see, you're going to, from 2015, your increase is going to be 220%, excuse me, excuse me. You're 249%. You're down to the bottom graph. I apologize for that. Right? No, middle graph, middle, you're southeastern mass.
Yeah. It's going from approximately $3 and change up to.
Just over $11.
$11.
Right around $11, that's correct, per kilowatt month. So, and in here, the last page is kind of, I'm just showing you through the raw numbers. This is happening in NEMA just so that everyone can actually see. So National Grid has the ability, they have customers in all load zones. So if you take a look at their basic service pricing, they make it very easy for you to look at. In SEMA this coming year, things would have been extremely cheap. Just take a look at your pricing, 68 May, 88, 87, 89, 91 and 95. But in May, when the capacity doesn't kick in, in NEMA, that's the highlight, 7 cents. Right? It's about a penny higher than NEMA's own. When the, when the capacity kicks in, it's 11, 10-4, 10-1, 11-2 and 11-9. They combine all of these rates, and everyone in National Grid's basic service pays 9432 from May through November. So you and I, I happen to live in WCNA, which is the mill, we have the pleasure of subsidizing all the people in NEMA. They're allowed to do it by DPU statute, so. That's just, and this is the first year that capacity has ever broken off. So it's never been like this before. So starting June 1st, it's going to be the first time that one of the zones is broken off because of that plant in sale. So it's a unique time for you, because you now don't have to subsidize. If you go out to bid, you're no longer part of National Grid's supply community. You don't have to subsidize that NEMA load for the next year. Gives you a little bit of advantage.
Can I ask a silly question?
Please, no silly questions.
But at some point, we need to get electricity from somewhere. We would not be getting it from the source of SEMA? I mean, that.
You would still be getting, it's still in the load zone of SEMA, but you'd be buying your energy.
Somewhere else.
From someone else other than National Grid.
But they would have to make up the loss of us not subsidizing that.
No, well, their rates will rise.
Right, that's what I mean, the rates would go up.
For other people.
Right, oh, for other people.
Not yours.
Not ours.
But we would be getting it from the same source.
Not necessarily.
Nope.
Okay, I just.
Because that's what we see. National Grid, when they got themselves spun off, they're only transmission.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Right.
They don't.
So they have to buy it too.
So they're out there in the market buying electricity. We're out there in the market buying electricity. We don't have to buy from the same source as National Grid.
Right.
National Grid is just an umbrella operation that everything flows through them in order to get to.
That's exactly correct. We all have to pay the toll. And they, they just systematically go out to purchase your energy. For residential customers, I'm saying, they buy it. 50% of their needs for 12 months. So they make a buy in March for a May start, all the way through until April. Then they do another purchase in September for a November 1st start through October 31st.
That's why the rates jumped dramatically.
That's why the rates jumped dramatically.
Exactly, and then they just add all those purchases, come up with your price. You're exactly correct. And you, on the other hand, you have a one sheet of paper. You can go out for 100% of your needs for six months, 12, 18, 24, oh, two, five years. And kind of smooth out some of these, this spike that we're seeing here, you'd have the ability to smooth some of this out so that people, it's going to get very, no one, nobody was talking about it, people on the inside know, next year when SEMA kicks in, this load zone, pricing won't be under 10 or 11 cents anywhere.
Wow.
Yeah, it won't be as bad as 2014 with the pool of vortex and 16 cents, but it's going to be two years of very high pricing, just due to capacity.
Realistically, what are our chances of being able to buy power out there at a competitive rate?
The nice thing is, is the chances are 100%. You can buy at extremely competitive rates. That's one of the things I wanted to bring up, so in, with Colonial right now, there are other towns, it's completely up to you whether you decide, the town of Plymouth, right down here in SEMA, the town of Plymouth, Kingston, Pembroke, Mendon and Upton a little bit further away.
Did you say Kingston?
Yes, Kingston, Pembroke, Mendon, all the towns that we were thinking about, Plymouth, Kingston...
Mendon?
Mendon and Upton.
Oh, wow.
They're still SEMA, yeah, still SEMA customers.
That far off?
Yes.
Wow.
All, 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 Plymouth and Kingston are both ever-source. Different, because they're different utilities, so they have a different kind of supply mix. We're, it's all about 30% right now with National Grid, but ever-source is a little bit different. It would allow, I think I'm gonna take a half step back, Plymouth and Kingston, I'm meeting with them on Thursday, and then I'm meeting Pembroke, I have a call tomorrow with them. Depending upon how this board wants to act, we could certainly do something soon and together, or you could go out on your own. If I did it together, I would ask the pricing to show you on your own and with the group, so that you can choose exactly what you were looking for.
Typically going with a group would typically be better?
It...
Not always, but typically?
That's correct. It really depends upon these capacity tags and what comes in and how each, so each, believe it or not, it gets more confusing than you'll ever imagine. Everyone gets a class average load shape, from that class average load shape, it brings you down to a capacity number. Where before, it was, everyone had the same. Now, the multiplier for Nema is already at that...
Three so.
It's already about a penny and a half. So the impact of that, of that ICAP tag has much more impact there than it does here. So it gets very technical how they price this.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, you're gonna look at an apples-to-apples comparison, being, my rate is 9.2 cents, their rate is 8.6 cents. If you want to get into the weeds, I'm happy to bring you into the paste. That's not a problem, I just don't wanna bore you. At the end of the day, you can make a very simple decision on price.
Yeah, don't wanna be in the weeds.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, well, so, okay, so it would be Plymouth, Kingston, Pembroke, Mendon and Upton?
With Halifax, correct.
With Halifax.
And the reason for this is simply, all the cities and towns that are at least participating, at least through OCPC, who had said, you know, let's do this aggregation program, everybody's doing it on their own clock, in the sense of, some people had town meetings early, some people had town meetings late, some people dilly-dallyed and, well, maybe, we move very quickly, relatively speaking. So, and, so even though there might be 12 towns in OCPC that said yes, everybody's at a different point.
Right.
Some of us are very close together, to the point that...
We could do some.
DPU has said yes to these communities, and now the next step is, we could in fact either jointly go out, five or six towns to go out to bid, or we could each do it individually.
Okay.
Let me ask that, is there a time, is there a time-sensitive thing in this, or, you know?
What I was going to do is talk to these other communities, just to give you, you know, we'd probably like, just so that you know, we'd probably like to, over the next, within the month of June, issue the RFP, so that we could get pricing for you again. Just because we get you pricing, doesn't mean...
You have to take, you have to go that direction.
I'm not happy with what I see.
Right.
And in fact, or, and you might in fact advise us to say, look, we're looking at the markets right now. Right now, it's, we think it's at a peak. If you wait two more months and go back out to bid again, we think prices are gonna be a little bit less. And maybe it's, and you, you factor in green energy, or you don't do green energy, you factor in, do you do a year, do you do five years, the pricing patterns are gonna be different on any particular day. And when we've gone out to bid before, it has to be an exact hour. We get bids in right then and there at that point, and say, and we have to say yes within a matter of, I think it's 24 hours or something like that.
They normally will give us, so I'll give pricing at around 10:30 or 11:00. I'll put together a spreadsheet so that it's very easy to see, deliver it down, and then normally between 12 and 3 is how much time we have. The market closes at 3:30, 4 o'clock, and they have to set their hedge, meaning purchasing energy on your behalf.
If I made a comparison, it's just like buying an insurance plan, somebody delivers the same products within an insurance plan, it's different in the rates.
That's exactly correct. And the good news is, is there's a bunch of new suppliers, because of all the aggregations, that have been driving down costs tremendously.
That's what we wanna hear.
Yes.
And I'd like to be driving a limousine, drive it down as far as possible.
That's absolutely, that, that's, you know, and some, again, you'll see that in the different pricing, because there would be one price for the group, but I'm just gonna use numbers, there could be 10 cents for the group, possibly Halifax's price alone might be 9.7, due to ICAP tags and low profile and so forth. It could be just the inverse.
Okay, so, just transit, can you translate?
Yeah, I was just gonna...
What's low profile, what's the ICAP tags?
Okay, so, when you use your energy and how you use the energy, at what time? So your low profile comes in for every hour of every day?
Oh, okay.
And they, they run an auction for that, and what they do is they price that out.
Okay.
So depending on, it just could be beneficial to the class load shape, so what they do is they just kinda shape it out, but when you pull out your load...
Yeah, it changes everybody else's.
Exactly.
Because we may be more of a bedroom community where our load is...
Exactly, so July 15th, it's 95 degrees out.
Everybody's at the beach and not using the air conditioner.
Well, the, or the opposite, all the offices are open at 3:00 PM, all those buildings are running, they're needing the air conditioning, they have the computer part. On the other hand, we are.
Or the pond is not closed down and we are all swimming.
It's possible to, but...
It could say...
Clean up is definitely...
But that's the thing, is that, even, when we're looking even at our individual accounts, the very, you know, the very fact that the school is not in operation during the summer changes the equation for us.
Tremendously.
Yeah.
Because you don't have a large ICAP tag, because you're not running during that time, but normally at that time...
Oh, that ICAP, can you define that?
So you're saying if we meet last fall in the summer, we conserve energy?
That's the price that's going away.
As long as you don't meet during the day, if I turn, if I, and I let Pam squatter and it's 78 degrees in our offices.
So we could actually, technically, we could affect the group price one way or the other.
That's correct.
Kinda like we do our insurance rates. Yeah.
That's correct, but I believe aggregation, it, that's what, that's the power of aggregation. This board gets to decide how they wanna move forward. Other aggregators wanna just put everyone together because it's the easiest thing for them.
Sure, yeah.
But I think it should be, if you wanted to go green and the group didn't wanna go green, I still think we should be able to go green.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion, that's why aggregation is so powerful. Kinda allows you guys to make the decision on what's best for Halifax. So I would say, the only thing we're looking for is a little direction, do you wanna give feedback? It's my understanding that Kingston and Plymouth, they've been working together, they kinda filed together, kinda went lockstep. They wanted to do something together. I'm gonna let them, now, if you don't have any interest in doing that, I won't even bring up...
Well, Kingston and Plymouth have a more urgent being in that a lot of, some of the part of their town is being supplied by the nuclear plant, the Plymouth plant.
Yeah.
So, so they know, with the knowledge that that's going on, they're fairly soon, they gotta make a decision as quick as possible.
But I guess real question is, is it complicated by the fact that they're only the source versus National Grid? Doesn't matter.
It does, it does not...
The purchase, it's the distribution that's different, right?
It's distribution that's different, but the price is still a price in the same zone.
Okay.
But there is a difference, a big difference. So they're subsidizing Nema.
Yeah, right.
And their spread, where your 30, 30, 30?
Yeah.
Their spread is 70% Nema. So starting in June, they're gonna...
They're gonna get whacked.
They're getting whacked.
So it would say...
Their price this, this summer, 10.7.
So it sounds as if it would not make sense for the town to be part of that group, if we're doing a joint bid with Plymouth and Kingston.
Remember, when you pull them out, they're no longer part of that group, so you would just be going out and SEMA together.
Okay, all three of us.
All three of us, yep.
Okay.
Right now, with them stuck in, with N-Star, they're paying 10.7. So to go back to that, that last page that's highlighted, they're basically no longer going to have to, you know, that would be the pricing that they'd have, but they're gonna remove themselves from that subsidization just at the marketplace, so they won't be doing that. It's tremendously beneficial to them. Now remember, next year, their price is going to jump like yours, and we're all gonna have to bear that cost. The nice thing is, is you have some decisions, you can spread that cost out, starting this year and go further.
Over, over further.
And then maybe you keep things, you know, right at 9, 9.5 cents rather than the 12 cents that everyone...
Keep it level, we're not gonna get the spikes.
That's exactly correct. That's exactly, that, that absolutely is possible.
That's what I like working with these guys, and they know how.
So, if, from here, if I can deliver back to the administrator that by Thursday afternoon, I can let you know, just saying, this group has decided they wanna go out, and then we're just gonna try to find the best date for everyone, unless there was any blackout dates that you had in June, because it's most important, the date that we choose, that we have a signatory. So the only thing that sometimes we ask is, he, the administrator who's here every day, has the ability to sign off if you like the pricing.
But we, we'd have to, like, have a selectmen's meeting that day?
No, no.
We can authorize him at this point to do that.
Okay.
He's charged.
I, I'm good with that, because it's gonna have to be a quick response.
Quick, meaning a three-hour, same time to talk, but yeah.
Right.
Correct, if people have jobs.
I would move that we allow Charles Seale to sign if there are, if such a program should come through that fits our...
Our needs and, and looks to be beneficial.
So I, I think some of the questions, though, as part of that, are, when we were talking with OCPC, it sounded as if, when we went out to bid, the bid would provide some options in itself, in a sense of there'd be a 100% green price, there'd be, you know, non-green or percentage green or whatever, we could look at the prices for a year out, two years out, et cetera. Are we going to be getting that?
Yeah, all of that will come in the general, so we'll just give you a brown power price. We would give you, you know, just given what's going to happen with capacity, not that you have to go, they'll do a one, yeah, every six months, all the way up to five years, to say, this is what, this is what we're seeing, if you can stabilize pricing, so forth. And then we'll give you natural wind product, main hydro product, mass class one.
Okay.
For different shades of green, and we can split those up any way you'd like at the end.
And is, what I also remember, at least in some of the cases, was that our individual residents would still have some choices, not necessarily the long-term versus short-term, but I know that when we were talking with OCPC and with you all about going through this process, that it might be that John Smith or Jane Doe might be able to get, okay, we've bought out, let's say, for three years. Here's the green price, here's the brown price, or, you know, here's our, and so they still would be given a couple of choices, if they, if it was important to them to go green, here's a price, if it isn't, here's another price. Are we gonna give them only one price for one period, or are we gonna give them some options?
So there's going to be, your plan allows for an opt-in product, so if you are going to, and some people, for a very small fraction, you can green up your load with a national wind product, less than a tenth of a penny, point zero zero one, in that range, you can green it up and say that it's a green product. You could make that your base product. Everyone would be in that, and then you could say, for the people that really wanna go green, kind of the greenest standard that's out there at this time, is a mass class one renewable energy credit, which does add tremendous amount of cost, but that means that the project was built up in 1997 in Massachusetts, or has a designation by Massachusetts that it was, it was built for.
Sized.
That's exactly correct. And it's local funds and it makes everyone feel good about, but it is expensive. The pricing has come down from $40 to around $11, which turns out you had $40 a megawatt hour, so it's down around, it would probably cost you an extra penny and a half to two cents a kilowatt hour, which is substantial, if you wanted 100%. Now, you could say I wanted 25%.
You get degrees of green.
Exactly. So I'm...
Why I'm having this conversation is, if the board's delegating this to me, I wanna be able to then say, okay, fine, we're gonna, we're gonna be saying yes if we say yes, but the yes means that there'll be several options for the residents and small businesses. We're not gonna simply say, here's one price for three years, done. It's going to be, here are a couple of options.
You can pick.
Yeah.
But what's gonna be the base, because you have to start with the base?
And, and this is what, you get to decide that, I'm going to do, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna just go with brown product, basic service.
That's where I'd be inclined to go, that's where it's gonna start, and then if somebody wants to add to it...
Right, because in that...
I like a little green.
Well, no.
Well, then you can buy green.
Which, which the individual resident will have that as an option.
Okay.
In the sense of, you can pick the base brown price, you can pick, I don't know, what percentage, the width...
Like I said, you could make it, so the RPS, that's the removable portfolios, that's that 21%, so you add another 79% and you're 100% green product, and you could do it, so if the price was 10, you could probably do it for 10.1 cents.
So there'd be, so there'd be green tiers, there'd be 0% green, certain percentage green, 100% green, and our residents would have that option. It'd be up to them to make that decision.
But the base would be the brown.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, but there may be...
That only makes sense to me.
Don't even wanna make it too complicated though, either.
No, I mean, we don't give them 100 options.
But, 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 maybe I want green, maybe I want 100% green, yeah.
Absolutely, but you're gonna start with brown.
No, I want green now.
She's the money person up here, that's why she talks about the green so much.
But we want the residents to have that choice.
Yes, yeah.
And that's the only thing, we wanna make sure.
And I truly believe that's what aggregation is about, choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
I guess, I guess you have, and then if we're going to join, I'll let you know what these towns are thinking, and then we can choose a date cumulatively once we have buy off.
Okay.
And I would imagine, right now, we're gonna shoot for a June RFP.
Okay.
So final pricing will happen sometime in the year.
Okay, so I second Troy's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we got it.
I wanted to give you one more, so in Halifax, the damage we got is about 3,000 meters in town.
So, so one question, the man in black, is that your bodyguard?
That's my son, Gilson. That's my son.
Our first meeting.
Aren't you excited? It's riveting.
And he much rather be someplace else than that.
Thanks for watching us. Oh, I know, is it on tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Started eight.
Thank you very much.
He's already in for Delilah.
Thank you.
Wow, that was, thank you for stopping him, because I did ask a couple more.
One of the things we'll have to think about, for the town itself, not everybody else, is whether the town wants to participate in this, because there may be pluses and minuses, just as there are for aggregation or not aggregation with other communities, it may be better for us to be going alone.
Right.
One of the reasons is that when we're dealing with Colonial, we're dealing with an essence broker.
Right.
Which is perfectly fine, they're legit and everything like that, but there's a surcharge to that, and they're, and they're looking at the interest as possibly of the larger group rather than us as a customer town of Halifax builders. So I'm starting, because our contract ends in December right now, I'm starting to look at, or what's happening is lots of people are pounding on the door saying, I wanna sell you power. I'm getting, you know...
More power to you, Joe.
I'm gaining, you know, I'm gaining information out, so we'll see how that falls out. I mean, we've got a few weeks also to think about.
Okay, so we left off at the MMHG, Sarah, can we...
Yeah, I just wanted to tell the board, I'm, the annual meeting's coming up, obviously I've been a very active member since...
Yes, you have been.
Not at the table. I'm planning on continuing to not sit at the table.
Yes, Datler, I mean...
Datler.
Hilton? Who plays that, I'd like to know. But mostly because I think the role I've been playing there has been valuable for the group as a whole.
I know Rocco Longo from Marshfield has, has expressed to me how helpful you have been in that role, so.
Let's see, ambulance rates. Fire chief asked that the board selectmen contact its legislators to support Amendment 514 to the sentence version of the state budget that's being debated this week, which will allow local authority to continue the med rates as necessary, but not more than the healthcare increase for the year, if there are towns or such that need to increase rates beyond that. There's an advisory group that can review the requests, and also it sets up nonprofit rates for med flight and such. The chief and the chief's association had said, they really don't want to see the governor's plan go into place, because it would reduce the town's ambulance revenues, which was the whole point of us being able to set our own rates, in fact. So if the board would approve, I'd like to send at least, send a radiome note to say, please vote for Amendment 514.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I did want the board to be aware, there's no action for the board to take, but on vacation[1650.08] time and highway surveyors, back when Bob Bedore became highway surveyor, he had accrued vacation time which was never paid. By law, we're supposed to do that at some point. So, we're, so, I've talked to the town accountant, we're gonna do that. We're also doing it now for Steve Hayward, now, just to get it out of the way.
How are we gonna pay for that?
There's enough money in the highway budget to do it.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, I talked to Sandy about that, but just so the board's aware of that. Use of the town hall green. Generations wants to have a dog show here on June 17th from noon to three. The Boy Scout.
In the parking lot, or in the grass?
Yeah, we're in the grass.
First thing that comes to mind is there's gonna be people with poopers.
I do not know.
Bagged behind them.
Maybe when we, the board makes ours requirement that the area be.
Policed.
Policed.
We'll have a greener lawn. Look what Hazel did for us.
Well, some of it, but sometimes you get yellow spotters.
Yeah, if it's not removed.
That's true. So, right now, we already have.
Too much phosphorus.
We have the Boy Scouts using the green. So the Generations didn't want to change their date, because we already have.
No, because I think they've already been trying, they've already been announcing it. I think somehow it fell through the cracks on their end that they never asked.
Oh, okay. So does the, do the Boy Scouts mind?
I don't think they should, because the Boy Scouts will be here over, they usually have fun within the driveway.
Alright.
But, what I've specifically said to the county, and, well, I'm sure that wouldn't hurt, I mean, cross pollination, but what I've said to Generations is, look, you've got to get in contact with the Boy Scouts about this. I'm gonna come see you tonight, and I'm sure the board's gonna say yes, but the board's gonna say, look, the Boy Scouts have dibs. You need to coordinate which area you're gonna use, which, as far as I'm concerned, you know, use the barbecue area when, for the Council on Asian Annual Barbecue, that's not gonna be used by the Boy Scouts.
Okay.
It'd be separated. But, coordinate it, you know, don't just walk in and not be talking to each other.
Does Joe's.
Help the Skelter.
Does Joe know how to get in touch with the Boy Scouts?
Well, it's Joy Marble who's been contacting me about this, and I provided, the information about the Boy Scouts includes the phone number for, I think it's Marla Webby, if I remember right, and so now.
This is the first time I'm seeing a dog show out here. Have they had these before?
No, I think so.
Is it gonna be like agility, or?
Well, they're gonna have several things going on there. Yeah, agility tests, yeah, is one of them.
Might actually be helpful to the Boy Scouts, yeah, it's.
Yeah, well, that's why I figured, the cross pollination thing.
That's great.
So if the board would approve, and I'll, but I'll make sure that the area has to be policed.
Second. All those in favor?
With the stipulation that they get talked to about the, making sure we pick up the remains of the dog.
Right.
The dropping.
Line item.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to.
So with the number one, there's the trash collection disposal to separate.
Yeah, but the thing is, there are things for the board to sign on all these, so I want to get those out of here.
Alright.
So, yes, so we have five, I think we have more than five pieces of paper.
No, there's five.
Yes. Trash collection disposal to the recycling center expenses, six thousand, because of higher costs disposing recyclables. With the single stream, we get less money for just.
Yeah, that's happening, yeah.
Well, markets have been terrible for recyclables.
Right. So Charlie, can I just verify that the finance committee's approved all five of these?
Um, except for the fire, the highway one, because that just came in today.
Oh, okay, alright, great.
So, there's, that one, police wages to police station maintenance, four thousand for electricity bills, water department gas and oil to data processing, six hundred and seventy for computer purchase for the water department. Um, three, sorry, go ahead.
Fire wages to fire.
Is this right? Highway, highway wages to highway clerk.
Yeah, let me, I'll get to that in a minute. So, four, fire wages to fire station maintenance, thirty-two forty for new lights.
Yes.
And the thirty-seven ten from highway wages to highway clerical is because Melissa Traynor has put in a resignation letter.
Oh.
And has accrued vacation.
I thought this was for Steve.
No.
Yeah, and that's why I was wondering why.
So she's leaving?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
So if the board would approve those and sign.
I would move that we approve the trash collection disposal for six thousand dollars, police wages, police station maintenance, four thousand dollars for electricity, water department gas, oil and data processing, six hundred and seventy dollars for computers for the water department, fire wages and fire station maintenance, three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, and highway wages to highway clerical for accrued vacation paid, three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
I will second that, but I want to make a note that, you know, we are really appreciative of all that she did at the highway department. She really helped out so much in that department, so we wish her well on her new endeavor, whatever it is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just on my Potsapod, I know we talked a lot about it early tonight, but just a couple of reviews. We are going ahead with the aluminum sulfate program. It should be done starting the week of June 5th. I don't have the, it probably depend on weather conditions and things like that.
Charlie, can you remind me, I think we closed it down for the, don't we?
We do. While, while the work's being done, we closed the pot, which is why, when I have the exact information, I'll be able to do the press releases and get things out on Facebook and all that.
Because June 5th is a, two weeks, a week and a half away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it'll be seventeen grams, which is a much larger dose than we've ever done on one fell swoop. We're hoping it's gonna bring the phosphorus levels down sufficiently so that we won't have the algae problem this summer. We'll see how it works. And this is, and the funding from this is, some of it is coming from the town, most of it is coming from the Section 319 grant, from the state and from the EPA. Is part of the grant amendment, there's money set aside for this pump program. The idea is this, rather than having to mobilize solitude or some other firm to go out there with boats and everything else.
Right.
And the reaction time for that, once we say go, it's usually three or four weeks at the very least for them to come out. The idea, the basic idea, we don't have design schematics or anything like that, is you put a pump, or a house in the shed or something like that, and you have a monitoring facility that checks the phosphorus levels from our potsapod. If the phosphorus levels get too high, you turn the spigot on, figuratively, and it spews out aluminum sulfate out of feeder tubes in the pot. There, we have to worry about people getting tangled with the feeder tubes and everything, and like I said, none of this is design specifically. And then if, once the phosphorus levels go below, you turn the spigot off. Obviously requires monitoring, somebody has to monitor it on a daily basis, someone has to hit the switch, or one way or the other, physically to go out there and turn the devices on. There's a lot of questions that have to be answered how all that would work, but over the long haul, it should be more cost-effective than having the mobilization that we have to do now. And what we, it's available to us throughout the entire spring, summer, and fall, for instance. So, if there's a commitment in the grant agreement, it still can be amended at a future date if we want to start going down a different road, but DEP seems very gung-ho on the idea of the pump house. There, the Section 319 money is supplying the money for this. Mind you, with no design or anything, it's all a cost estimate on their basis, is how much they think it's gonna cost.
Can you make up the difference?
No. Well, what I think would happen is if we, when, if we found out that this was gonna cost more than the grant, then we sit down with them and say, we can't do this for the money that's there. Either come up with some other money, or we use the money for another purpose related to lowering the phosphorus levels in the pond, things like that.
Okay.
And we, I think we'll try and figure out later this year how to move forward on this, but this, this is not going to be done this calendar year. I would see this as being done sometime in 18. Plymouth County Advisory Board, they sent out their annual letter asking for confirmation of appointment for the town's delegate and the alternate.
So Troy is the delegate, and you are the alternate.
If the board was so.
I'll make a motion that Troy be the main, and that Tom be the alternate.
Second. All in favor?
Chicks at the playing fields, we had talked about this a few weeks ago, but in the interim between our meetings, Dick Steele, Pippa Roan, and Nicole Dollya contacted me about allowing the field to be sprayed for ticks and mosquitoes by Burgess Pest Control. This would be, I believe, the soccer fields at the very least, if not the ball fields over here. And this is gonna be done by Burgess Pest Control for free, and I said, okay, fine, I, I didn't, you know, I don't know how effective it actually is going to be, but.
As long as it's non-toxic, it's a wonderful plan.
Yeah. So I said, I gave them permission. I don't know what, you know, I haven't heard any complaints from anybody about the spraying. I haven't heard complaints about people buying more ticks, so I'm hoping it's working. School roof project, I'm asking that the board waive the permit fees for this. This, the building permit fees don't go directly to the building inspector. The building inspector's paid a salary, it just doesn't go into the general fund. But in essence, we'd be borrowing money.
To pay ourselves.
Which doesn't make any sense. For the wiring inspector, the wiring inspector, like the plumbing and gas inspectors, are paid on a fee basis, in that the wiring inspector gets eighty percent of what would be charged, and the town gets twenty percent. In this case, again, what I'm suggesting is that we waive the fee, but, and we've done this before on other occasions, take the fee that would be paid to the wiring inspector, take it out of the twenty percent that the town gets from other.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if the board were to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we waive the permit fees for this school roof project.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just that, I know that Kim had talked about this. We're already having a meeting with DEP later this week about the administrative consent order for the city of Brockton to do a month Potsapod. The Central Plymouth County Water District Commission had sent a letter to DEP saying, in essence, they should have been involved as part of setting up the ACO. DEP replied saying, well, no, this wasn't to do with the district, this was to do with the, for you to comply with its own waterways permit under Chapter 91, and that's what it dealt with. It didn't deal with the district operations. But there will be plenty of chance for public input as part of the resource management plan that's required under the ACO. So that's where that stands. Police Department, the police chief has asked for 111F leave, but for medical only, for Officer Robert Briggs for an injury suffered on May 3rd.
I will make a motion that we approve 111F for medical bills only for Officer Robert Briggs for an injury suffered on May 3rd.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hops Playground, we do just have a letter in the file now from Hops that accompanied their check for sixty-three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars for their funding, to help fund the playground, so, so the board's aware it was in the correspondence.
I went to the Hops meeting the other night, and Jonathan said that you, next week, possibly are sitting down with Jonathan Seeley and the grant writer that we.
I haven't been told that.
Okay. Well, get ready for a call.
Are you telling me?
I'm telling you. Telling you. Yeah, so.
You committed in without asking?
No, no, I did not. Charlie was great enough to give them the name of a grant writer to help work on this particular matching.
They're now in correspondence with that person.
Right, and so they just want to make sure that we have everything.
The county has a grant writer too, so.
I think this, yeah, this woman has done.
Very, very good. She, she's done very well when we've done competitive grants through the Small Cities Program, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. No littering signs. We had a letter from Don Corby, who had asked the town put up anti-littering signs in order to deter people from littering. I mean, I'm fine for putting them up, I'm not sure how effective they are, but the only thing is, I don't have any money to do this.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, there, there's signs over there, don't walk the dogs, you know, through the field and property, and people just ignore it, they don't do it anyway.
I met with Don Corby. I mean, she's done a great job in helping to clean up. You know, she participated on Halifax Cleanup Day, and this is something that, you know, she holds pretty close to her heart. She's frustrated by, you know, the way that some people keep their properties, and the fact that people just dump trash everywhere, and so, you know, I, we could look at the signs, but in the minimum, I think I talked to you about maybe putting it on the electronic sign, just a reminder. I mean, it's really hard, because you've got so many people caring about the community, and then it just takes a few that just.
It takes to win a balloon, and.
It's frustrating.
I started this thing years ago, because I got tired of seeing trash on the road, and I just went down Indian Path, and the coffee cups and all that stuff.
I spend every morning policing my front, overnight.
Is there any chance that the highway department has any kind of money for?
I can talk to Mr. Hayward about that.
I mean, we've talked, you know, I had that conversation with her about the signs maybe not, you know, there are rule followers, like, I'm a rule follower, you know, we're all rule followers, but there are people who are not rule followers, and they just do what they want, and they won't even see the sign. But, I mean, we are so appreciative of what everybody does individually to help keep Halifax clean, and, and so, I understand a hundred percent where she's coming from.
I don't disagree with it. It's a great idea.
So at least, maybe we could, in the meantime, we can put it on the electronics.
If, if, maybe there's something in the building committees budget, or the highway, even if it's a couple hundred bucks, too.
Well, somebody, somebody gave me a lead, and I actually passed it off to Amy Tru, that, oh, it actually was Bert Gaynor, who works for the Sheriff's Department, that they have accrued people that you can contract to have come in and help clean up. So Amy Tru was gonna try to get in touch with that particular group, so it will be ongoing, and hopefully it will happen more than just once a year, but, yeah, those litter bugs are terrible.
Landfill monitoring contract, this is a three-year contract with tying bond through the Board of Health for forty-five thousand seven hundred for monitoring the cap landfill here on Home Street.
I'll make a.
Sufficient money in the budget to copies assigned.
Do all we all, or just the?
Yes, all three.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Home Public Library Director Jean Galahad sent me information about the library parking lot, which will be lined during Memorial Day weekend, along with lining the lot. Jerry Elliott will be installing speed locks and signage for designated parking for the library. I wanted to make sure the board was aware of what areas were, they've had signage up there before, I just wanted the board to make sure they were aware of it.
You usually have it on a barrel, right?
Right.
Jean?
Yeah, and so he's gonna buy some contraption, pitch is covered there, and the sign will say, library parking only, and he has designated the nine spots that he wants to designate.
The orange area is there on the diagram.
Okay. And then do we, I don't know if it makes sense to say, library parking only during library hours, or is that?
Yeah, the sign's not made yet, so if that's.
Do you think that makes sense?
I was thinking that, yeah, I mean, I hope it helps. We need to do something to make sure that the library patrons can park at the library, so.
Yeah.
That would be fine, that'd be agreeable to that.
I see no issues with it. But once again, it's, it's whether or not people went to school to learn to read.
No, what I was just thinking, I'm just thinking out loud, because this is the first time I'm kinda looking at, I'm thinking, even if we put library hours, like you have night hours sometimes, and that, people may not assume that, and then.
Right, so.
Yeah, yeah, so just library parking, yeah.
If they park there when the library's closed, it doesn't harm anybody.
Right.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so forget that.
Yeah, I don't know how much room is actually on the sign.
Yeah, no, that's.
There would be room enough for our hours.
Yeah.
Then you have to put some hours versus.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
There's nothing here applying, huh?
No, that's just to look at the signs. Do you need a motion?
Yes, if the board would approve.
I'll make a, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, you could, we gotta get back in, we gotta.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
It's our first meeting of reorganization, so we're not as.
Just for the, discombobulated.
Just for the record, I'm not asking for nay votes, because I'm hearing all affirmative votes.
Yes.
Plymouth County Budget, just, there's continued emails I'm seeing about the budget discussion, especially the commissioner's salaries. I'm not asking.
Good night, thank you.
I'm not asking for the board to take any action on or anything like that, it's just that the board's aware of it. I know the annual meeting is.
June 15.
Yeah, so, and Troy will be going to that. There was.
That's open to the public.
Yeah. And my understanding is, there wasn't any interest necessary by the board of having the commissioners or the county executive come in to talk about the budget, or did they want that? I mean, I didn't, the board didn't seem to have any particular interest in discussing these issues, so I haven't made an appointment at all.
There was only one item in their budget that concerned me, and that was the substantial increase in salaries for the commissioners. But, is that a done deal, or is that?
Well, no, because that's why it's going to the advisory board. The advisory board has to approve the budget.
They have to approve it, and there'll be discussion on the floor, I'm pretty much discussion at that meeting on that.
I, I might wanna go to that, so we may wanna post that.
Okay.
Because we'll have a quorum for it.
Yeah. Okay. Surplus property libraries getting rid of a four-by-six bulletin board that's in fair condition. I recommend I send a note out to the other departments and see if anybody's interested, give everybody a week to contact the library.
Where's the page?
If it, and if no one is interested, I, I, from what it's, and I haven't seen it, but I don't want them simply saying, okay, you can have it. I think they probably should put a sign up at the library for the second week and say, if somebody's interested, put your name in, and we'll draw a name out of the hat.
Yeah.
I don't want to go through a bidding process or anything, but I also don't want somebody to say, well, I would have taken it if I'd known you were giving it away. Let everybody have a chance at it if they want to, but first I'll check with the other departments. Boy Scouts like to hold their next file, if the board could approve that, please, yeah.
Surplus.
The surplus.
So moved. Thanks.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Boy Scouts like to hold the next file drive on July 8th, Saturday.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Cemetery Superintendent, I had to put this out for request for applications, because it's a wage and personnel position. The board received, I believe, seven applications from several individuals, including the current highway surveyor. My recommendation is that including the current Highway Surveyor. Um, my recommendation is that the board forego the interview process and hire Mr. Stephen Hayward as the Cemetery Superintendent. The reason being, the logistics now and integration of the Cemetery and Highway Departments basically makes it very difficult to have two separate bosses giving direction to individuals. Um, as an example, Cemetery employees will involve themselves in Highway activities from time to time, including plowing. And I know the Highway Department assists the Cemetery Department with burials and such, and if we get, I don't wanna set up a potential situation for conflicts between...
Well, historically, that position has gone to whoever sits in the position of Highway Surveyor, has also been supervising the Cemetery.
And the few times that it has not, it's been problematic.
Yes.
And, and to your exact points about the integration of both departments, I, I, I think that is the wisest move, uh, is to combine those positions, or not combine them, but they have same persons.
I mean, at some point, I think it should be appointed.
Yeah, I believe that we accept...
Well, that's a point, and to the legislature, which is another whole...
Yeah.
I mean, that we accept the recommendation from Charlie that we forego interviews and hire Stephen Hayward as the new Cemetery Superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Highway Department, carryover request by Donald Croll, David Swanson and David Naught to carry over forty hours of vacation leave from fiscal seventeen eighteen until now under the union contract.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Fire Department, the Fire Chief would like to have a new decal and patch.
I love it. No, it's like, it's good. It's good. It says, it's, it's much better.
Does it say, "Where is Halifax?"
The old one.
Which is...
Does it say, "Where is Halifax?"
It just had, like, like, this says Halifax, Mass., with our, like, the other one just had, like, a, a cross. Well, it had this, the EMT thing in the middle, and it was just not, so this, this ties in fire and EMS. And it, and we were established in nineteen oh nine.
It's good.
Yeah.
Now, it says, "We were established in seventeen thirty-four." We didn't have a fire till, we didn't have a fire till nineteen oh nine.
That's why, that's why it started. I like it.
If you remember, I suspect the reason you have a fire department in nineteen oh nine is this place burned down in nineteen oh six or something like that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we took a patch.
So I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, use of the town hall green, um, generations this time, in fact, did ask for permission to use the town hall green. They'd like to have a yard sale on the twenty-sixth of August. Are there any conflicts?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Uh, inventory forms, um, this is an annual submission that departments are supposed to send in. Um, the only ones who have not done so far, so far, are the Parks Commission and the Municipal School Building Committee. I've notified them several times about this deficiency. I'd like the board to send a letter under its own signature saying that they need to get these in by the time of the board's next meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, we had a resident come in, I can...
Sarah Nobles.
Okay. Um, wanted to put a box at town hall for care packages for veterans, which should be working with Will Corry, our Veterans Agent. I don't see a particular reason. I just said to the, to her that we just don't wanna deal with perishables, um, or anything like that. But there are a play of other things that can be sent, and they, Will would work with her on putting together packages for active-duty, um, military residents.
Where would it be placed?
I would put it right next to the flag box. I think that's, I mean, otherwise I have to have the departments, some department, someplace.
I guess my question is, if, if, and I hope it, if we do decide to give it to them, is that should get overwhelming, you know, response to it, but how often will someone be coming in to pick up the package?
Well, I think what would happen is if we get an overwhelming response, I will be in contact with Will and say, "We've got him, you've gotta get some empty boxes, which we'll probably get out of the copy machine room and store, and store them in his office until he can distribute them."
You don't have to put room in there.
I know, well, then he'll have it, he'll have every reason to keep moving these, yes.
All right. I, I would move that we allow, uh, a Veterans Agent, sort of Veterans Agent, to place the box in the town hall to collect items for care packages for veterans.
So, uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the Conservation Commission, um, John Peck, the board had sent letters to John Peck and April Letourneau, who had been missing a number of meetings because of personal reasons, um, and Concom, preventing many times from, uh, the commission from being able to, in fact, hold meetings with a lack of form. Um, he called me, I think, yesterday and said that he believes his health problems will no longer prevent him from attending meetings, which would be great.
Glad to hear that, glad to hear that, too, yeah.
You know, because your number of meetings he missed during the last fifteen, seventeen months, um, and, you know, he and both April, and missed a whole bunch, and in fact, were meetings, but I'm not even sure they missed, but they didn't have a forum, so...
They didn't miss anything, but there was no meetings.
Well, except they missed a, you know, the meeting didn't have possibly because of them.
That's right.
So, what, you know, I've not heard from Miss Letourneau. She's up for a reappointment next month, um, but, so we'll see how things fall out, and the board can make a decision at that time whether to reappoint or not. Um, John is not up for reappointment, um, so what I would recommend at this point is just letting that sit for maybe two or three months and see if he's able to attend those meetings, and, uh, if he isn't, problem solved. If he isn't, the board can always revisit it then. Um, and outside, I know that Cam has a few items, and then we have executives that we need to go.
Yes, we have some recycling fees. Would you like me to...
Yeah, we have, we gotta read up on that.
Yep, so we have bill number seven fifty-seven.
Yeah, but you gotta read the whole thing when it happened. Um, I've been, I've been, going back and forth with the current order. What happened was that the closing, um, recycling bill wasn't presented. It wasn't the municipal certificate. Um, so now just readers that are...
That's, that's different.
Um, so what she did was she contacted the lawyer's office for the, you know, closing, and they said, um, that where they had, so, they just said that where they had signed, and the seller and buyer signed this agreement, that if anything came through after the closing, it was through the seller and buyer, that they would have to figure out who, who was what. So they pretty much kind of ordered off. Like, they're not, it was actually their fault, the attorney's office, because they didn't pick it up on the municipal lease. Um, she, the current owner has contacted the realtor that she worked with, and that realtor was trying to get in touch with the seller's realtor, but has not received a phone call back from the previous owner.
Maybe. I'll give her back to him in two seconds.
So basically, the court order is saying, "Please abate these bills, because I tried, but, you know, it was not my responsibility."
Well, inasmuch it was not her fault that this occurred, you know, I, I, but I still feel that the lawyers should've...
But what they're saying, that they signed this page stating that any bills have to be frozen, wouldn't be between seller and buyer.
Well, basically, that's not, I suspect what the paragraph said.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was about to say.
I suspect the paragraph said is something, once you've... Yes, it, what's this?
That they would fix it.
Yeah, but they're, basically attorneys, by having the buyer and seller sign that piece of paper, the attorneys waived, waived the responsibility for what they did, which was to mess up.
Right, yeah.
And that they threw that responsibility onto the buyer and seller rather than the attorneys who drew up the final statement and such.
The only issue I have...
Was it on the municipal lease certificate?
It was.
And they signed the paperwork in good faith that everything, in fact, was in order, you know, basements were going with all...
I think this is a municipal certificate.
It should've been on the statement.
But it wasn't on the HUD.
No, I understand, but, but...
But that's, then that's the attorney, uh, you know what? I feel like we've done, we've turned these down before, and if we start doing it now, then we are, we're not gonna be in a position later. I'm not supporting waiving it, I'm sorry. I don't think the town should eat something because it's somebody else's era. I feel bad for the woman, but it's up to her to have to chase it, not us. It was due. Whether the attorney comes up with it or not, that's just my opinion, no. I'm only one vote.
Well, it's clearly on the municipal lease certificate. I mean, if it was, it's a doable amount. I would not vote to waive it at this time.
I'll make a motion that we do not waive the recycling fee.
I'll second it.
I'll reluctantly vote not to, Terry, I just feel badly for the...
I feel bad for her.
Changes. I think that a good phase agreement is if we're negotiating our contracts and we say something, and then follow through with it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next thing we have is a road opening on fourteen Lake Street. It's for a trench permit. Um, we have, it's for gas line. And we don't need a detail, the sketches enclosed, the dig safe numbers there. Everybody seems to be okay with it. Yep. So I'll make a motion that we approve the road cut for fourteen Lake Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this one?
Yep.
Your name's first.
I'm second, yeah.
Okay, what about the trucks on, um...
Pine Street and Walnut Street.
Yeah, I, I got, uh...
Where does Pine Street meet Walnut Street?
It doesn't.
Just that there are trucks on both streets.
Oh, oh, it sounded like it was at an intersection.
Uh, during, during the election, I had several people come up to me and speak to me about the fact that they, they would like to realize that it's on the border, especially with Walnut Street, that's, that's, uh, comes out in Bridgewater there. Instead of trucks are flying by there and causing noise and unrest. Same thing on Walnut. They want to know what the...
Okay, that, you just talked about Walnut. Pine Street's the other problem.
Pine Street's the other location that they feel that is just...
Pine Street's a cut-through street, too.
Yeah.
Pine Street you could do something about, because if the, we'll have, we'd have, if we, if you wanna do a truck exclusion for Pine Street, like we did for Forest Street, you have to go through the traffic survey and all that.
I understand.
It's doable, simply because the workaround for Pine Street is simply saying, "All the trucks down Thompson Street." It's very easy. I don't see a workaround of Walnut unless...
We've been there before.
Yeah, the only thing that I said to him was that we had discussed this issue, you know, in depth before. But what I had said to him, hopefully we can contact the police chief if we do decide to do anything, and see if he can contact the, the chief over in Bridgewater, or was it, what, he's picking?
No, it was Bridgewater.
Yeah, Bridgewater.
Yeah, 'cause this came...
And maybe set up some traffic things up there, whatever.
This was a major issue about three or four, maybe about five minutes ago.
When we surfaced the street.
And, no, yes, and so Traffic Study looked at it. Um, we had a lot of feedback. We had done some, um, spot patrols there, um, and things seemed to be under control, so perhaps that's all we need to do, is, but Troy said it was, just to revisit, because at that time, it was gravel trucks coming from Bridgewater.
Well, I think there's still more, whatever, because I asked him what type of trucks were going through, and he said he thought he saw gravel in it.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if, in fact, the removal of the gravel and sand from the Cranberry Box, whether those trucks are going down Pine.
Yeah, I suspected, I suspected it's Bridgewater seemed to gravel.
Yeah, which has always been the issue. But we were talking, one time, diverting them down and having them come up one oh six, which I didn't see, as being safe, we didn't need that extra mix of traffic on that intersection.
Well, as I said, if, if we can get to our, our chief Ted...
There isn't anything that will get anybody's attention more than a Ted.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Hopefully, if, if they can coordinate it between...
Yeah.
The Bridgewater's line and our line, you know, and have somebody there around the off.
I suspect most of it's probably in Halifax, when that stretch from Old Summit or Summit Street down to one oh five. 'Cause it's a little more windy coming around from the Bridgewater side. It's a little more populated.
So for Pine Street, if the board wants, I can start the process for truckers who live on Pine Street. Um, for Walnut, I, as you all pointed out, what I can simply ask is the chief work with the chief in Bridgewater for better enforcement of the traffic laws. Um, we can't prevent the trucks from going down there. We can prevent them from going over the speed limit.
Well, I, I, I think that's the best resolution at this point, is to start the process on Pine Street and do what we can on Walnut, because I made no promises that there could be detours and stuff, but if that comes, we can make that confrontation, it'd be great.
Well, if, if you were gonna prohibit traffic on that section of Walnut Street, you'd have to prohibit it from Summit Street, too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no good answer.
There's no answer to it.
Other than, you know, enforcement.
So how the board feel about that?
I'd just contact the chief, and he can, because if it's something that we've, we've, we've done.
In fact, I think we put up additional signage on Walnut Street about the speed limit back when the last time this happened.
Okay, if we can do those things, I think at least...
We should put up a full camera up there on one of the poles and just make it look like, you know...
The other thing, if, if we're through with that issue, is, uh, I had an individual come up to me. He spoke at town meeting. The gentleman was, there was the mechanic.
Yes, he used to be, he used to be on Capital Planet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it, is it Rosini or is it Ross?
Rossini.
Rossini.
Yeah, he, he was really helpful on Capital Planet.
I would hope that Charlie, if you can make a phone call, it was Mr. Hayward, and see what the, did you?
You had asked me to, and we knew who he was, um, and then he looked up the...
I just, I just promised him that I would speak to Mr. Hayward if someone would, and at least have him sit down and talk, where he can get his thoughts on the truck before it was bought, 'cause he, he made some valid points at, at the meeting, you know, it's just that, should've been done before the decision was made, but we'll see.
Well, we just wanted to have the money available, so that whoever ended up...
Yeah, I, I understand why we're gonna get it.
Yeah.
And after we talked to him, I told him, I said, "It's, it's like saying, you wanna go on vacation, you put money in the, in the bank." You know, for that purpose, we were putting money aside, so when you went out and found a truck, at least you'd have enough to purchase a truck, and not have to worry about going to another town meeting.
Are we... Are we at that point where we can go into executive session? Do you have anything else, Cam?
Um, no, I think we got everything.
Charlie, we've gone through all your stuff.
Reporters in the house.
Um, quick question. Um, what was the gentleman's name from Colonial Power?
Do you hear that? It was his name.
I couldn't remember it either, that's why.
Spoke pretty fast. He never gave his name.
He never gave his name.
I probably can pull it out with my correspondence, but it'll take a couple minutes.
Yeah, yeah. That's right, I really don't remember.
No, that's why I said the gentleman from Colonial Power, 'cause I couldn't remember his name.
Well, um, do you know, do you know approximately how long executive session will take? Should I ask my questions before you guys have a question, or should I?
You should ask.
Yes, because we've...
There I go. I know exactly what I'm gonna ask, anyway. Just turn this on.
Yeah, he's in a chair.
Really?
Yeah.
You may get an answer, you may not, but go ahead.
Okay, um, my first question is about the aluminum sulfate treatment that's gonna be happening on the Ponce de Pan. Um, what exactly does that entail? And that'll be happening with the, we can treat it that way, okay?
The aluminum sulfate treatment?
Yeah, or whatever is going on with that.
Yeah, that's the, is that the aluminum treatment?
So, okay, aluminum sulfate is a chemical that binds with phosphorus, to take the phosphorus out of the water as a nutrient. Basically, it binds, and it goes down into the sediment. So what happens is you have boats going out there, spraying the chemical into the water, so that it will bind with the loose phosphorus. By eliminating the phosphorus as a nutrient, we hopefully discourage algae growth.
Okay, so where is the phosphorus coming from? That's in the pond. It's just in there?
Sorry, we, well, we just, it's part of the presentation we had, but, okay. It's a stor, it's a historical problem. You've got Cranberry Box, you've got septic systems, you've got road runoff, you've got, um, commercial enterprises that use phosphorus for cleaning laundry and such when the old one, Ponce de Pan, was still built. Basically, it's built up over decades, so, and it's still coming in, for instance, from road runoff as an example, or from upstream from Cranberry Box. So we're looking at both reducing the amounts that are going in via those, um, systems that were presented tonight, and also doing the aluminum sulfate treatment for the phosphorus that's already in the pond right now.
Okay, great. That's all I need to know about that. My last question is just about the Memorial Day parade. Um, anything new and exciting going on with that this year?
No, it's pretty much the standard Halifax parade. We don't get the band this year. Kingston gets the band. Um, so the folks who are marching the parade will gather at about nine o'clock over at Country Club Drive. The parade starts from there at nine thirty. We'll start ceremonies here at about ten. After the ceremonies, which I expect to end around ten thirty, there'll be a dedication of the Peg Fitzgerald Memorial Garden here just outside Town Hall.
Okay, yeah, and Peg was a really beloved member of the community.
Yes, and she's served in a number of capacities as town accountant, on the board's luck, and for a number of years, finance committee, and I know agent personnel for someone, probably numerous other roles, official and unofficial.
Enormous committees that she was involved with, different groups.
Huge contributor.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. That's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too.
Go out behind the door.
I will, and Ed says to give him a ring. He's like, "I wanna speak to my friend Troy." Do you have, do you have his work number? I can give it to you.
You can give it to me if you like.
Okay.
I haven't talked to her for a while.
Okay, so I can just, like, recite it, I guess, do you think?
No, what to tell him, give a call here.
Oh, he's not there. He's not there right now.
No, I'm saying, give a call to the office here, and I'll get, I'll get the number and call back.
Got it, okay. It's late.
All right, I need a, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, contract negotiations with Highway Cemetery.
And litigation with Halifax versus Work Cemetery.
Wasn't on my list. And litigation.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Who moved?
Yes.
Who's gonna move?
I moved, oh, I moved it, and Troy seconded it.
Ms. Roy moved it, Mr. Garrett seconded it, and we all voted yes.
Okay. Yes, yes.
And I shall, I shall abstain from any discussion of the cemetery. I don't wanna talk about it.
Eh, and we will not be coming back into regular...